Chairman of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
A moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here. A present, one absent. Mayor.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, Council President. This is my activity log for the meeting of October 28th, 2024. Last couple of months, excuse me, the last few weeks, I've met with... There's a dis... The first thing I'm going to report was a meeting I had about something in the 4th District. It was a resident of the sophomore neighborhood complaining about a connection to the bike trail that they used to have coming from the sophomore neighborhood that was cut off with the realignment of the bike trail system. I went over that with Dean. I want to scoop in Councilman Emerson onto that issue as well. It's problematic. I understand where the neighbors are coming from, and it's also tough for NICD to get the connection they used to have because of the realignment. So we followed it up with the letter to the constituent. No, we looked at it, the engineer, myself, chief of staff. It's a tough issue. We're going to work through it with NICD and see if we can get it fixed. Met with representatives from Gary Public Transit System about busing across Northwest Indiana. Obviously, Gary Public Transit has routes through the city, and I met with a woman on behalf of the organization. Had lunch with Mayor Gary also, Mayor Eddie Melton. Him and I had lunch, touching base on issues. Held Mayor's Night out in the 6th District. That one was at Hess School. Met with FOP and fire negotiating teams to catch up on negotiations with both unions. That was internal meetings. To give you an update, only thing that's really changed since the last meeting regards the negotiation, the offer is still pending for the police. The police are not voting on it. I don't know what that means, but they're not voting on it. So we're just sitting there waiting for them to vote on it. Fire Department, we gave them our latest offer. I think, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing back from them. We're making good progress. Obviously, there's big raises being talked about. I've been keeping the council as up to date as I can. If you have any questions, I can talk to you after the meeting if you don't mind, so we don't do that on the record. We won't answer any question you have about what's going on. Met with members of the administration over a request by Councilman Dan Spatelli to raise the limits on the homebound program. As everybody knows, Councilman Spatelli is a Realtor in his professional life. He's also advocate for this program. We are presenting our ordinance to the council. If it's not pending today, it'll be coming soon to codify this in our ordinance. It's not codified currently, so we're going to codify homebound, and we're proposing to raise the limits. It's... This all came from the Realtors' Breakfast, actually. Councilman Spatelli's been pushing us to reconsider the limits, and I think it's a good move, so we'll have more on that coming. So I appreciate Councilman's work on that. Met with Awana Miller, our community development coordinator, over problems that came up... It came to my attention about Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels, we give a grant every year to Meals on Wheels. I received a concerning problem from one of the volunteers for Meals on Wheels about our residents getting cut off because they can't come up with the $1.50 or something like that. Following that up with Meals on Wheels because we give a lot of money to Meals on Wheels, and I don't want to hear sad stories about 90-year-old residents that can't come up with the buck fifty for meals when we're giving them $15,000 a year, which is what we're currently doing. So I wanted you all to know I followed that up. It was a legitimate complaint I got, and I'm glad that it was given to me, and I'm following it up because nobody wants to hear sad stories about Meals on Wheels, especially when Hammond gives so much money annually to that organization. So met with Hammond State Representative Carolyn Jackson about 2025 legislative session and some ideas we had. Met with the CEO of Luke Oil, Tom Collins, to catch up with him and to touch base over land issues that we have across our city. Tom Collins is a real... He's a great CEO. I'm asking him if he'll consider a donation to the city of Hammond, in Hessville, actually, and I think he's considering it. So attended a naming ceremony at Calumet College of St. Joseph over the new residence hall, beautiful, brand-new residence hall located in Robertsdale, Calumet College of St. Joseph. Just renamed it. I wish I knew the name. Councilman Mark? Clark? I should remember that very easily. It's Clark Hall. Thank you. Thank you, Myla. So that was really nice, really nice little apartment complex-looking dorm. So attended the Veterans Day planning session. I wanted to remind the council that the Veterans Day Parade is this weekend, on Saturday, November 2nd, and the temperature is supposed to be warm, so please come out. Please remind everybody at home to come out for the Veterans Day Parade. We're the only Veterans Day Parade in this entire Chicagoland area, and we don't get huge crowds, and it's heartbreaking because we have veterans from all over the region coming to that, so please help us out. I know a number of you who get floats, and I appreciate it. So attended a rip and cutting for a new business in the 3rd District, Fuerte Restaurant. It's a super restaurant with its 3rd location in the city. It's right outside the window of City Hall so we could easily order tacos, and it's right there, which is wonderful. If you like tacos, go to Fuerte. It's a really good restaurant. It's going to love the 3rd District, it's going to love Fuerte. So congratulations on Fuerte for your 3rd location in our city. Attended meeting with architects and park staff over the sportsplex expansion. To give you guys an idea, I know that you all helped with this, with the food and beverage issue. Right now, the soccer field expansion is a new 150-foot-by-170-foot flexible space. Eighty percent of that space is going to be turfed for flexibility, for flexible use for soccer, baseball, and softball. We're adding eight volleyball courts that turn into four basketball courts. We're adding a second concession stand, moving the sand volleyball courts to the backside of the building with lights. So once this expansion is complete, the sportsplex will have up to 20 volleyball courts, up to 10 basketball courts, four sand volleyball courts, three soccer fields, and two concession stands. That's been made possible through the council's work with us on the food and beverage issue, and I appreciate your help. That's going to be a great expansion. It's going to add a lot more tourism, a lot more people in our city. As you all know, we just hosted a division, the largest women's volleyball tournament in the country, D2. Women from all over the Midwest were here last weekend. It was buses everywhere. I was going through North Hammond, there was buses in North Hammond. It was wonderful. So we're doing great work there. Had lunch with the new managing editor of the Northwest Indiana Times, Kathy Chaney, and former managing editor Mark Chase. Toured Hammond's new gateway station in the 2nd District. I know the council's got a meeting, I think, this week, another tour of the gateway station. If you didn't sign up for that, please do so. I know a number of my staff is signing up for that one as well. Held an annual voluntary awards breakfast at the Dynasty and held a voluntary meeting with the residents of East Hammond Pullman Neighborhood to discuss new housing, new economic development in the area. So tonight before the council, I'll come up and talk about things as they come up so I don't waste time up here. I'm available for any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
May have a super-busy council meeting tonight. Obviously, we'll all be talking a lot, so if you don't have any questions, I say thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, next up, approval of minutes.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from the October 15th meeting and place them on file.
But a motion is second by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well-posed. Next up, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I move to approve claims beginning with claims dated October 10th, 2024, and ending with claims dated October 23rd, 2024, claim number 8925 through claim number 9327 inclusive in the amount of $6,169,559.63. I so move.
But a motion is a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Claims passes eight. Yes, zero, no, and one absent. Next up, public hearings.
Item A, ordinance 24-25, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, an ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2024 Gaming Fund.
Would anybody like to speak to this public hearing on ordinance 2425? Anybody like to speak 2425? 2425. Public hearing for 2425 is closed. Next up, communications. Anybody have any communications they'd like to bring up?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I just want to... I was able to attend Hammond Police Department's trunk-or-treat yesterday and just wanted to thank our police department for sponsoring that event. My kids had a great time dressing up like Ninja Turtles and seeing all the different other kids there, and everybody was friendly, gave out a lot of candy, which my kids would not be able to eat, but I appreciate it anyway. So just wanted to thank our police department for putting on that event yesterday and everybody else who was there handing out candy.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I would like to echo Councilman Tyler's sentiments on that trunk-or-treat. I was going to go over there yesterday, got all dressed up, had my costume and everything, and the streets were lined with cars and kids, so I really appreciate the participation of our city with the activities that our city offers for our children in particular, and in this particular case, the police department, so our kids can get to know our police officers. So yes, a great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. Along that same vein, I want to thank the Hammond Mohawks for sponsoring a trunk-or-treat on Saturday. It was nicely attended. Cars were dressed in the parking lot, and people had a very good time, and the weather was very good for it. So thank you to the Mohawks for putting that on for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Next up, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
The Capital Improvement Board met on 10/21/24. Item A, funding allocation 212, relocate a 24-inch water main, Dowling Park Stormwater improvements, grimmer construction in the amount of $212,916.60. In the 5th District, the 24-inch water main was found to be nine feet deep in conflict with the new sewer. The water main was razed, cost split 50-50 with the Hammond Water Department. Item B, funding allocation 213, construction observation of Kennedy Road Diet United Consulting in the amount of $604,003.6. Hammond's share of this fee is $120,820, or 20%. Item C, funding allocation number 215, Columbia Avenue reconstruction design, 170th to 173rd Street, first group engineering in the amount of $315,064. In the 4th and 5th District, construction to be funded by federal grant from the Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, scheduled for 2028. Item D, funding allocation number 216, South Hammond Subarea Plan, HWC engineering in the amount of $156,000. In the 4th District, boundary is state-lined at Calumet and 165th to the Little Calumet River. Plans to study traffic related to the South Hammond NICD Station and future development. Item E, funding allocation number 217, rectangular rapid flashing beacon in the amount of $19,400 in the 2nd District at Chicago Street and Johnson Avenue, related to schoolchildren now walking to school to provide illuminated signs at the road crossings. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 2420, 2421, 2422, 2423, 24, and 25, and 26, I believe. 26, correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee report?
Yes, Mr. President. As usual, I'd like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings on Wednesday, November 6th, which happens to be the day after Election Day, so keep that in mind. 6:30 PM at Edison School, Edison Community Watch will meet. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November 21st, at the Hanson, the former Hanson Library, now the Hanson Community Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, November 12th, 9:30 AM at Irving School. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, November 14th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate, or at least acknowledge, the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch. They had a meeting back on October 17th, I think it was, and they had a police officer there talking about fentanyl in our community and how it affects our children, our adults, and it was just a very powerful and informative presentation. And that is why I encourage everyone to come out to these Crime Watch meetings, because you will get a wealth of information, not only about crime in your neighborhood, but things going on in the community in general. So I just would like to acknowledge the South Holman Crime Watch for having such a powerful speaker. Coming up at Edison Community Watch and also Irving Community Watch, we will have a speaker from Haven House, which is a home for victims of domestic violence. So please come out, find out what's going on in your neighborhood, things that... services that are offered within our community, and you will be surprised at the information that you find out, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Next up, ordinance, 3rd reading, final passage.
Ordinance 24-20, the City of Hammond's 2025 Budget Proposal, sponsored by Mayor McDermott.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I move for final passage and adoption of ordinance 2420.
Second.
But a motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion? Discussion? Mayor, would you like to speak on this, or...
We've had plenty of discussion with just about every city council member about this budget. As we all know, Megan and her staff went through multiple meetings with each department. We averaged the expenses over the last few years. The numbers you see in this budget, every single line item has been researched. If you have questions, I know, obviously, we're at the public portion of the meeting now. Obviously, if we want to talk about things on the record, I'm more than willing to, but I don't want the public to think this is the first time we've looked at it. Each and every one of us has worked real hard on this, so, I mean, I'm not sure what you all want to talk about that we haven't talked about already, so...
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I know I read every page of it, looked at it, and I have to commend Megan and the city because of some increases in salaries and stuff like that. I was actually impressed on how much we saved in other areas. And just like the mayor said, this isn't the first time we looked at it. Nobody's hiding nothing, and just want to tell her she did a good job on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Warple.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Councilman Warple was talking about, you know, we were talking earlier about the negotiations with police and fire, and it's hard in this budget to build numbers into this budget, knowing that the police and fire may change it drastically with those negotiations. So I think that we could easily live with the numbers we have in that budget. If we have to come back to it, we will, but we imagine we know what's going to happen in both departments as regard to raises for next year, so I'm hoping that they'll follow through and vote them in, and we can all move forward. So thank you, Councilman. And by the way, I'm not even... Megan and her staff went through a huge computer transformation that encompassed every part of City Hall, every part of city government. We implemented that transformation this year, and then we had an audit, because we're always getting audited, and then as soon as we cleaned up the audit, we jumped right into budget season and interviewed every department head. So the controller's office works extremely hard, and I'm not just talking about the controller's office in City Hall. All the controller's offices, NICHI Utilities, redevelopment, everybody works real hard to put their budgets together before you guys... And I know you guys ask a lot of questions, and there's a lot of back and forth. I just want to say thank you to everybody involved in this process. When it works, it's great to see it happen, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else have any questions on 2420, City of Hammond 2025 Budget Proposal?
Could I... I can go over some of the big parts of the budget if you want, Councilman.
Okay.
For the public. The large expenses we have in here, college bound is one of the large expenses we carry. It's $3.5 million every year. City insurance, self-insurance, insurance for the employees, for the police and fire, everything is about $11 million a year. Public safety is running around $50 million a year. We pay about $5 million in debt. Police budget alone is $37 million. Fire Department budget's $25 million. Gaming, as we all know, has been under a lot of pressure, what's going on with the Hard Rock and its tax advantages that it has over every casino in Indiana right now, amplified by the fact it's a brand-new boat and exacerbated by the fact I don't really see the urgency coming out of Horseshoe Casino, but I'm not the CEO of Horseshoe Casino. I can't force them to do things they're not willing to do for themselves. Alls we could do is, we're partners over there, and when they're having a tough year, we're having a tough year with them. So the good news I have is, even though we're having a tough year in gaming, we're having a great year in other categories, and that helped us with this budget, Councilman. The water revenue's up, and it's wonderful, and it's all contractual, and it's going to go up next year as well. The pilot fees that are paid by the utilities are up, and fair, by the way. The assessed value is up, and I know nobody likes it when their assessed value goes up because that means their taxes go up, but if your assessed value goes up, that means your house is worth more, which is our main job. So when all these things come together, we could have a bad year with gaming and offset it with the strength in other categories, and that's what happened this year, and it makes me feel like we're doing a good job, because we did have a bad year in gaming, and we're still managing to pay the bills and give raises and do all the things that cities are supposed to be able to do. So thank you for all the help.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else have any questions or discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2420 passes seven, four, one against, and, I mean, one against and one absent.
Ordinance 24-21, the 2025 Budget Proposal for the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, sponsored by Councilman Spatelli and Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2421.
Second.
But a motion is second, second by Councilman Spatelli. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
When we have utilities and redevelopment, presenting our budgets to you, we all follow the same set of principles, so every budget you see will have the similar types of raises built into it, similar type of analyses done on every single line. Megan works real close with Karen Janega in this case to put this budget forward, so just because I was raving about the controller's office doesn't mean I don't think that Karen is doing a great job in redevelopment. These budgets are well thought out when they're presented to you, and consistent facts apply to each one, so I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Mayor. Any... Excuse me. Any questions? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2421 passes eight, yes, zero, no, and one absent.
Ordinance 24-22, the 2025 Budget Proposal for the Senatorial District of Hammond Sewer Maintenance Fund and a Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spatelli.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2422.
Second.
But a motion is second by Councilman Spatelli. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Council.
And when it comes to the utilities in this case, this budget's done by Rachel with the same care and attention and the same rules that we follow in the city. I want to point out, in the sanitary district, there are no rate increases built into this budget. There's no large expenses that we haven't talked about with the council, like nothing with our consent decree, anything like that built into this budget. This budget is very, very much like the budget you passed last year, outside of salary adjustments and things of that nature, okay? So 2% pay raises, all of the same rules that we follow in the civil city.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. 2422 passes eight, yes, zero, no, and one absent.
Ordinance 24-23, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for final passage and adoption of 2423.
Second.
But a motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
This is basically the budget that fixes the salaries of all non-contractual employees of the City of Hammond, and it's roughly 2%.
Mr. President?
Yes.
We put in 2% for every employee, outside of the contractual. All right? So if it's contractual, it's police and fire salary ordinance, they're going to take over. If it's contractual with Teamsters, they're going to probably... We're going to have to negotiate that into the first year, right? So with Teamsters, that's going to probably... The first year will have to be the number we put into the budget with you all that you're approving, and we can make it up to them in years two, three, and four if they're uncomfortable with that. But with police and fire, that's going to be a whole separate issue that we deal with between the council and the administration, just with those two, so we can wait on those. But yes, 2%, long-winded answer. Sorry, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Twenty-four twenty-three passes, eight, four, zero against, and one absent.
Ordinance twenty-four twenty-four, sponsored by Mayor McDermott, and ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all police officers and firefighters in the City of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Move for final passage and adoption of twenty-four twenty-four.
Second.
A motion of second by Councilwoman Vines. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Again, like was, what was discussed in caucus, the contracts aren't done yet. This is a budget estimate based on the talks they've had so far, and it's my understanding that if everything goes as planned, you might have to come back to us with like an amendment on this towards the end of the year.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mayor.
We built one percent in for police and, into this salary ordinance right now. And what we're going to plan to do is, when we finish our negotiations with police and fire, we're going to have to come back to you all and amend this. Okay? We talked to corporate counsel. Corporate counsel felt this was the best way to do it, is to pass this tonight at the one percent. And then we'll have to come back before the end of the year and fix it. But we have to wait until we're done negotiating to do that. So right now, because we're not done, we have until the end of the year, though. So we were informed this is the best route to take on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes seven, four, zero against, one absent, and one no vote.
Ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-five. An ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2024 Gaming Fund, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-four twenty-five.
Second.
Second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion?
Mr. President. This is moving funds from 2023 to 2024 for the appropriate districts.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes eight, four, zero against, one absent.
Ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-six, sponsored by Councilman Salinas, and ordinance amending ordinance number ninety-two fifty-two and further extending the College Bound Scholarship Program.
Mr. President.
Councilman Salinas.
I move for final passage and adoption of twenty-four twenty-six.
Second.
A motion of second by Councilman Warple of twenty-four twenty-six. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
This is a further extension of our College Bound Scholarship Program.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mayor.
For the audience at home, this scholarship's been in existence now for almost twenty years. We've been, we're in our nineteenth year of this program, which is hard to believe. At this point, we've given out eight, over eight thousand eight hundred total awards at this point. Fifty-eight million dollars in tuition assistance since we started the program. Fifty-eight million dollars in tuition assistance. Fifty different colleges and universities across Indiana. These students have completed over three hundred and fifty thousand community service hours in the City of Hammond in return for that service. In 2024 alone, this class, we have four hundred and sixty students in the program currently, tending twenty-seven schools across Indiana. The interesting thing about College Bound is, most of the kids stay local. Over sixty percent of them don't leave the immediate area. Forty-three percent of them go to school right here in Hammond, at PNW. Forty-three percent of all of our students are at PNW. So this is really helping out the local university as well. IUN, Calumet College, and Ivy Tech also, very heavy local population goes there. And we renewed the program ten years ago. I think the only person, actually, there might have been a few of you on stage when we renewed it at that time. At the time we renewed it, there was concern about whether or not we could make another ten-year commitment. We did it. Obviously, we're in year nine of the ten-year commitment. At the time, we came up with language, council and the mayor, that said something to this effect, and it's built into the ordinance. If the mayor declares a fiscal emergency, it gives us the ability to get out of this program. All right, let me explain it to the audience at home. We're paying for homeowners' college tuition, the city budget, out of the city budget. This is an extraordinary thing. There's not a lot of cities in America that do this. So there is language built into this ordinance that gives us the flexibility if an emergency arises and we need to get out of this commitment. It's built into the ordinance. I insisted on it ten years ago. I know there was others that insisted on it. That language is still in there. Obviously, this is another ten-year commitment. If we follow through with this, I hope we do. I think this program has helped us become the biggest city in Lake County, with the highest assessed value in Lake County. We have the most school, students in the school cities in Northwest Indiana. We have a lot of things going for us here in Hammond. I think a lot of it has to do with this program. So I hope we give it another ten-year run. This is not an emergency. This is year nine of ten. We still have one full year to act on this if you guys don't want to do it today. But I do want to point out, I think it's good to give the people in this program the assurance to know that this thing is approved for another four years, because they're buying houses right now, and they want to know if their kids are going to be covered. So, thank you for taking this up, Councilman Salinas.
Thank you, Mayor. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
If it's not too late, I'd be like, I would like to be added as a cosponsor for this ordinance.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I was here with you.
Yes, sir.
When we started this.
In the first year.
And.
Twenty years ago.
What excitement was generated by that, by us passing that. It was really something avant-garde and shot in the arm for the city and for its residents. Here we are, almost twenty years later, fifty-eight million.
Yes, sir.
Well-spent, but we are nearing a place where we're hitting a crisis. We're very close. And what I would ask is that we look at, the program we modeled was the Kalamazoo Promise, right?
At the time, yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
At the time, yes, sir. That's where we got the idea. That's where we got the idea, Councilman.
And how they did their program was through the Kellogg Foundation. And they used strictly private funds to fund that scholarship program. And so what I would ask to be able to continue College Bound, sort of ease the burden on the city, is that I would request that you put a committee together to see what kind of private funds we could get to contribute to the program. You guys did a great job with the Y. You partnered with White, Crossroads Y, and the city put in some money, and we got a great project out of that. I would ask that we look at doing something similar with College Bound, so that we can keep it in place, so that it can run another ten years, and so that we can put some of those dollars back into the city where it's needed, infrastructure or where else. So I'm all for College Bound, but I think we have to look at revamping how we fund it. I'm requesting that you put that under consideration.
Thank you, Councilman Kwitski. Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I, I wish that I would have had for my children, a daughter and a son, College Bound. I was, they were previously at college before it came into existence. But I, I think it would have been, it's great, and I hope it continues. And I, that's, that's my final statement.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Any other discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I personally support this program a lot. I think it's wonderful. I think it's, and I, and I share Mark's enthusiasm at signing we passed it. I still have it, I do. I love this program. I think it makes us unique. It makes it, people want to live here. It makes people want to stay here. I think that's worth a lot. And it's hard for us to see, and I know, looking at that number, it's a big number, fifty-eight million, over twenty years. It's a big number. But I think that that helped us achieve a billion dollars in economic development. I think it helped us. We've, that's how much we've brought in over the last twenty years, billion dollars in new economic development. How much of that billion dollars is brought in because of that fifty-eight million dollar investment we made? Nobody will ever know, Councilman. You could hire people, I could hire people, they probably have different numbers. I get it, man, this is a big number. It's a big commitment. I'm not mad at anybody for feeling the way they do. I, we could afford this. Three million a year. That's not wonderful. It just makes our job harder, I get it. But we do theoretically pay for this with Illinois water revenue. We make twenty million dollars a year in water revenue. A lot of that's going to pay for programs like this. We do still make money from the gaming boats. That also helps, and it's not what it used to be. Councilman Mark remembers like I do when it was in the mid-thirties, and it's way less than that now. So I get, I'm not mad, but I think this is an important part of who we are. And if it got to the point where we couldn't afford it, we have the ability to get out. And that won't be a fun day, just like I'm sure it's not easy for Councilman Mark to say what he's saying right now. If we all had to say that, that's a bad day in Hammond. That's like a flag-at-half-mast day in Hammond, because we can't pay for College Bound anymore. That day may arrive. And if it does come where we can't afford it, we do have the language. That's, and I do want to point that out. So that protects us.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I know I was doing a different job when you first put College Bound into effect. And I saw it firsthand on my mail route. When it first started to take effect, the one thing, before it was taking effect, what I did see were a lot of my old neighbors that I grew up around, the moms and dads dying off, and the kids not living in Hammond and just selling the houses. We never knew who they were going to. I didn't see a lot of families moving into the neighborhoods. But once College Bound became into effect, what I did notice were families coming back to Hammond. And I will never forget the housing crisis of 2008, and a lot of the foreclosure notices that I was having to knock on the door to get people to sign. And I had people tell me, we'll figure out a way to make these payments, because we have College Bound in Hammond. And I'm just saying that I saw it with my own eyes. And to go back on that promise now, I think would be doing a disservice to the residents that moved here with little kids now for that reason. So yeah, it would be good if you could get somebody else interested, like a business or whatever. But I think this is a great program, and it needs to remain.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mayor.
I do want to point out, Councilman Mark, about, I would, I, I don't remember the foundation, it could be Kellogg, I don't remember if that's the one that's right, but if somebody wanted to give us a lot of money to help fund this, I'm, I would be so thrilled, because this is a cost for every year for us. So like, I don't want you to think that, I think that's preposterous, okay? It's obviously not easy. Hey, would you give us a hundred million dollars or whatever, right? I'm willing to do it, but, you know, it, you know, right before us right now is the pending motion. So, anyway.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I appreciate you saying that, that you're willing to look at that.
I would love to.
Possibly pursue something like that.
There's a lot of billionaires out there, you never know.
We have some big industry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for considering that.
I, I would, yeah. You're right. The Dean and Barbara White Foundation has been incredible for the City of Hammond. I think, since I've been mayor, they've probably given over fifty million dollars to Hammond. There's that one foundation, so who knows? Maybe there's, and if I remember correctly, the Kalamazoo Promise, they were giving nine figures, if I remember correctly. The city was gifted, and they live off the interest. And that would be amazing, if we didn't have that three million dollar cost on our book every year. But anyway, I appreciate it, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? They got anything? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Passes eight, yes, zero, no, and one absent.
President Rakos, that concludes the reading of ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Number ten, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-seven, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance authorizing the extension of the maturity of thirty-nine million dollars, variable rate demand sewage and solid waste disposal revenue refunding bonds, in parentheses, Cargill Incorporated Project Series 2005 of the City of Hammond, Indiana, the execution and delivery of a first supplemental indenture of trust, the execution and delivery of a first amendment to loan agreement between Cargill Incorporated and said city and related matters.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Kwitski.
Yes.
Thank you.
I move for twenty-four, twenty-seven to pass through first and second reading. Be referred to council as a whole with a committee meeting on November thirteenth, Wednesday, November thirteenth, at five fifteen P M.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
This is a, a bond that goes through Cargill. It's their bond. They have a representative here, Mr. Adam Lawson today. I appreciate him being here from Cargill. And they're asking for a five-year extension for the bond. And that's already been built into the previous ordinance, so they're not asking anything that's out of the ordinary. And again, the expense for the bond is totally theirs, and we'll have the committee meeting in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion?
Ms. President?
Yes, Mayor.
Cargill's one of the largest employers in the city of Hammond. They're good neighbors. We've had issues with Cargill in the, Cargill in the past. We've approached Cargill with the issues, and they've worked quickly to address the issues. I know the councilman's aware of that. It is a company, so sometimes things do happen. For the, and I, Councilman Mark explained it very well. For those of you that heard of municipal bonds, that's what we're talking about here. If it's for pollution control, which this bond was for pollution control, they're allowed to get municipal treatment, which is tax-deferred basically if we endorse it. So we endorsed it twenty years ago. They're asking for five more years. If we extend it, then they can continue to get tax-free municipal bonds, which is what they're trying to do. This does not cost us, like Councilman Mark said, does not cost us anything. This doesn't appear on our books. It's just us helping one of our biggest employer, employers in the city. So thank you, Councilman Mark, for sponsoring it.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander. Spatelli.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Twenty-four, twenty-seven passes on first and second reading. Eight, yes, zero, no, and one absent.
President Rakels, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Next up, resolutions. We have none. Number twelve, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
I've been debating whether or not I should say this or not, but this weekend, my fourteen-year-old grandson got picked to represent not only Hammond, Indiana, but the Great Lakes Region in a fourteen U baseball tournament that only fifteen kids in the entire Michigan, with Illinois, Indiana, and Kentucky region get to play in. And he hit sixth in that region, and he played flawless at shortstop. And I know there's a lot of talk these days about what do kids do? You know, there's nothing for kids. This kid started on a baseball field at Hessfield Park at four years old playing T-Ball, and it's a game he loves. And now he gets to show his talents this weekend to represent the Great Lakes Region, and I'm very proud of him. Secondly, when we were talking about the investment in Hammond and the assessed evaluation, about once a week, once every two weeks, I drive around the entire city, and I just look at it from my old eyes. And I noticed something we passed not too long ago. The frame's up already, and that Swanell beverage over here. And I don't know, there's a lot of BS we hear as elected officials on what our priorities are, you know? What we seem to like and not like. But I like to drive along, round and look at all the new things going up. And that's something I think every one of the, on the count, because we could have very easily lost that business. Councilman Tyler, you sponsored that ordinance, so just kind of neat when you drive around and see how much new development is coming around the city of Hammond. So I just wanted to say that, too.
Thank you, Councilman Warple, and congratulations to Mason.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, grandpa.
I don't know if I can sit in a car for sixteen hours without having to use the bathroom every ten minutes, but I'll cut back on the coffee.
Congratulations.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I'm gonna make a motion that we change our October eleventh meeting.
November eleventh?
I'm sorry. November eleventh meeting to November thirteenth with a five-thirty caucus, six P M. meeting start.
Thank you. Any sec, I need to have a second.
Second.
Taken by Councilwoman Vinesz. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next meeting will be November thirteenth, five-thirty caucus, six o'clock regular meeting. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
As the mayor stated, the Veterans Appreciation Day is November second with a ten A M. start. It's our eleventh annual Veterans Appreciation Day Parade, a day of remembrance for a lifetime of service. Rain or shine, we're, we're gonna march in it. If you know a veteran, tell him to march in it, or if he wants to just observe it, he can. So that's it. November second, ten A M. start. It's at Olcott and one hundred and seventy, I believe. Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Emerson. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed, except public expression. Do we have any public expression?
I want to hear from Sylvester. He just sits there like he doesn't ever care in the world.
George Steyer, Robert Stale. That's a pretty good meeting. Last couple of meetings have been pretty good. My problem with this, with it is, I guess it's like what the Washington Post said on its masthead, "Democracy dies in darkness." None of the things that you passed on final readings was on here on the agenda. Is, is there like some prohibition, inhibition from putting out an agenda for the meetings? How's anybody supposed to know that wants to come down, wants to tune in or otherwise, what's going on? I know it sounds like I'm harping, but I am harping. I don't know what's going on. Final readings? Don't tell me that's an omission. I ain't buying that. I don't, I don't know what the problem is. I mean, everybody just, you guys are just doing your own thing like we're just out here in the peanut gallery, and we gotta take what you serve up. I got news for you. You're supposed to be our representatives. By law, you are our representatives. Now, you've been delegated some authority. That don't make you guys gods, okay? There is some accountability. I know things get pretty lax because the mayor's been the mayor for twenty-plus years, but you guys haven't. Be nice to have a nice little agenda.
Thank you, George. Next up, Jenna.
Good evening, council. So I actually did not prepare a speech today, but wanted to let you guys know that this is probably gonna be my, my final speech. I'm gonna be traveling, going to Italy, and gonna be traveling the world, doing, doing what I enjoy. So I've been for the past, for over a year now, I've been working on this documentary. It's literally become my life, my purpose, and I have grown so much in, in doing so, in making it. And I am so excited for everyone to see it. It's, it's really, it's really amazing how a community could come together for something they, they really love and care about. And I, I'm so grateful to be able to capture that for, for, for my city. So I'm, I'm leaving you guys with a, with a movie. And I hope that it, I hope that it gives everybody a little bit of hope. And I also want to thank, you know, you guys and having the opportunity to speak.